Look at my little notebook here.
Hey Sarah, did Joey ask you about leading us in the pledge tonight?
Shit, and then I just wrote tool.
You know the words.
Already sweating. Hello, sir. Good evening.
We're in seven to seven or eight.
And it's three days.
How do you do that?
Yeah, it's pain. I mean, adding our cash to the day for doing absolutely nothing. His brother's clothes. That's joyous smell. She said you smell like festue. Kind of similar.
Rob says that the planning commission is shot on the fiscal court YouTube page.
Hey, how you doing?
No. Hello, Matthew. How are you, sir?
Good article.
Hey, young man. I'm great. How are you?
Very well, Stacy. Hey, you and Ben. Why don't you sit with Bruce?
I remember saying something.
Issue something. Oh, come on. That was the question.
Man, I can't.
That was.
What now? I don't think Travis is going to be here. He has training in Richmond.
Travis is not going to be here. Oh. Okay.
We can't. Where Shannon?
Shannon's sister. Yeah, she's having that. Yeah.
Some of your excuses. How you like our new attorney? But we won't go there. Okay, if everyone would please stand. We pledge allegiance to the Lord, the God of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. We'll ask that Mr. Bruce Manley lead us in our indications.
Let's pray. Our dear gracious and Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for our city. We just lift up our leaders today, dear Father, as we guide and make the right decisions. Just pray for Shannon, Commissioner Cox's family, dear Father, tonight. Put them up in healing. And we just thank you for our first responders. We pray for their safety. In Jesus' name we pray.
Everyone, please be seated. We'll call the meeting officially to order. And we'll excuse Commissioner Cox this evening. He has a something he needs to do with his sister for a family matter, and so he is excused from the 4:30 meeting. Okay, item number two minutes. I hope you've had time to review those. October 21st, 2025 regular 5:30. And October 27th, 2025 special 9:30 a.m. meetings. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Chanel. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tool. Any additions or corrections? All in favor, I? Any opposed by like sign? Motion carries item three, departmental agency report. Is there a motion to accept those? Motion by Commissioner Strode. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tool. Anything anyone would like to highlight? If not, all in favor, I?
All right.
Any opposed by like sign? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move to item four, our work session. We want to welcome our two friends from Kentucky League of Cities this evening, Ms. Sarah Stoll and John Buchanan. We're here to help us update our strategic plan and talk about the future a little bit. So, John, looks like you're up first.
Thank you very much, Mary. Us again in wonderful Winchester.
I'll be presenting this first draft.
Sarah will be taking notes for me. On behalf of Tab, my honky head up. So I'll share the drafts with the commission.
Thank you.
All right. So I'll try to be quite intense with the first meeting, going over some of the changes. Update. But starting just on this first page. Updated the introduction and the executive summary to reflect work plan update, the purpose of this strategic work plan. Just slightly for grammatical reasons. I think the one major change we made to the vision for 2025 and those top four goals is we moved quality life up to number one. They were stressing the first meeting that that needed to be number one. And then also within this page, we added two sections for completed projects and current and ongoing projects. If you all see any items within either two of those sections that need to be changed, updated, items taken off or anything like that, please let us know. But those are the items we identified in the first meeting that have been completed or currently ongoing.
Okay, you're gonna take a good look at that to see.
I've got a few for this section. Right here, I've just got city splash pad.
Yes.
If we could name it the Jean Gay Splash Park.
All right.
We had the Jackson Street Bridge removal. Under Public Works, we completed the construction of a salt farm.
Salt farm.
And the last one I had was hire a full-time grant.
Wonderful news. Any other items from the commission to be changed in that section? Any items within the current ongoing projects?
Anybody see anything that needs to be added, deleted? But John knows we go here.
I've got a few in that too. I want to give you all the chance to make sure you're good. In the current ongoing projects, Lincoln Streets project is not really a roadway project.
Okay.
It probably is probably affordable housing related than it is.
All right.
And under Public Works, it says increased personnel. I would also add into that new office. Office building.
Wonderful.
It's fallen down yet, has it, Brian? Might be close, but.
So that might be a need then, I hear. All right. Any other items within this?
Under current and ongoing?
Under current and ongoing.
I've got stormwater asset inventory that's current and ongoing. Our Fifth Street project is current and ongoing.
Is that drainage project? Is that a drainage project?
The Fifth Street project?
Yes.
It's a stormwater project.
Anything else? All right. The separate areas identified, we kept it at seven, I believe, but we did change things around a little bit. That we kept infrastructure at number just to stay consistent. And then I believe that we removed development and broke that up into community events and parks and recreation. And then I believe those last three items remained the same, but we just updated the recommendations underneath those.
So make changes.
I've got a question for the commission on this one. When I look at number three, community events, I think of that as quality life too. Should those be combined?
I feel there's a lot of instances similar to what you're saying through this packet. So it could go either way, essentially.
And I believe. Well, I believe that was part of the conversation last time as well. Including parks recreation, if that's also a quality of life element, and it's really up to you all how you want to distinguish those items. I believe we did try to make sure that each of those subsections had different strategic plan items within them instead of having to overlap. But it really is up to you all how you see fit. I do see in some places where community events and parks and recreation do fall under quality of life, but then you can also make the argument that safe city also falls underneath that, housing falls underneath that. So it is really up to you all how you distinguish how different one or the other is.
If I may say, I definitely think we leave parks and recreation as its own line. That does not need to be bolted into anything else. And I would say whatever everyone else feels, quality of life. And community events, you said that we had taken this from downtown development and downtown and the community are two different things. So I don't know if that's something we're trying to, I mean, I know Whitney's got goals for downtown, but like, I don't know. You know what I mean? Yeah. So should we start really answering your question?
Community and downtown events?
Community wide.
Community wide.
So that's.
What do you think, guys, please?
Community quality of life. Just make it one, one word.
Community. Quality of life with events.
Take out both and just make one big long word. Community quality of life events. Of events.
I think these are strategic plans are wonderful, but this is where you can get into such nitty gritty of like, are there going to be 20 things and they're going to be super individual, or are there going to be five things and they're going to be one? I think it's really what the mayor and commission feels.
Just want to leave it as it is?
I definitely don't want to lose parks and recreation as a line.
So just leave it like it is, you think? You want to leave it like it is, Joe?
Yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
And I would say I devil's advocate, believing it as it is. Is somewhat easier to believe the strategic plan is kind of broad in terms of things that get completed, being focused on what those specifically are. And we do
projects and timelines.
Detroit priorities later and to be a little bit more specific within these areas. As far as infrastructure went within strategic areas, there are really only three items that remain from the previous plan. Every year kind of items for the city to consider. Did you all, any items come up that you want to include this section? Go at this section as good as it is where you see it now, or if there's any kind of edits you want to make whatsoever.
Mission. This is your chance.
Well, you're just talking about breaking down 137 right now, correct?
Correct.
I don't see nothing on infrastructure to be anyone else.
Under number one?
Under number one.
You have any thoughts about one, or are we good with infrastructure? Can you? I think it's okay.
Not under infrastructure.
Infrastructure, you okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Okay.
Looking at quality of life, I know there was a bit of a focus about things for families and opportunities for them to enjoy the beauty and fun things to do in Winchester, namely the second bullet item, conducting a feasibility study to expand the trail system from Walnut Grove to downtown Winchester. Connecting county part and city part to the county line. That was something that came up in the first meeting. And then a lot of these other items were a continuation from the previous plan. Partnering and recruiting downtown grocery store was an item from the former downtown section strategic area that we've included in the quality of life piece. Is there any changes or updates to that section you would like to make?
I would be interested to just, again, you know, it's all just phrasing. Continue the shuttle service citywide.
Because it is the one.
Yes, it already is.
I have bullet point number three. I thought that that makes it up in the workforce area a little bit more.
Than quality of life, I get that.
And kind of what Commissioner Tool was saying, taking out the word downtown. I think probably that last bullet, continue and strengthen enforcement ordinances to protect businesses and residents. I think downtown needs to come out because that is citywide. So so if you want to use that terminology again, or however you want to take it.
I kind of thought, because it could go both ways, but I thought maybe that could be under safe city. You think that fits better under safe city?
Instead of quality of life?
Instead of quality of life.
Well, if there's one getting the enforcement, it doesn't help your quality of life, so.
Under safe city, expand personnel services for planning, so which could put
What do y'all want to do on that?
The only thing you're gonna do is change the wording, right?
Or put it under safe city. We'll leave it where it is or put it in both places, so. At least it's time that everybody. Speak up, guys.
I mean, I think it could be either one. I think we're getting too nitpicky. What's the phrase, like a six or half a dozen? Whatever that phrase is. You could break this apart every which way.
Well, be the way, can't be wrong. Why not just leave it like it is?
Commissioner Tool, you were saying something about the opioid abatement.
I didn't know if that was the line item we were on that Dr. Manley brought up. I don't, I agree. I don't know that that falls into quality of life, whether it's safe city or, I mean, what actually probably more appropriate is workforce training, as you were suggesting.
I agree with that. Do y'all measures? Agree with moving opioid abatement?
I agree.
Okay, John, sounds like that's a yes. So I'll strike that right here. Okay.
We look at community events next, and this was a duty created section. We got a little bit created trying to come up with meaning that's in terms of things that festivals, graves, and that's pretty much the different places around the city. Things like a Thanksgiving parade, L.A. Home Festival, partnering with local businesses, utilizing new city properties for pop-up shops, kind of events for the patients for events. Evaluating what's currently here in terms of safe festivals and that's seeing where that might be areas for improvement. Then also supporting efforts for recreation and doing that's a festival.
You might want to add or add or subtract this.
Have we ever had an L.A. festival?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Next year might be there.
And it's our 100th anniversary.
That's right.
That's right. So we may be doing something next year with that. Okay, but everything on there was, anybody else wants to make a comment?
I have a comment. You could tell I went through this pretty good. I think the first bullet point was the last bullet point very similar. I think that
So we should say create and support? And then take the last bullet out?
I think what we wanted to stress there, part of the conversation in the first meeting, was ensuring that local businesses and organizations be the front, frontward version facing backward facing face. Those are So I think we just, I think I got to write this down and want to just that one device.
And just say create and support and take the bottom bullet out. But everybody chime in now, this is.
Yeah, that's okay.
Anybody else? Okay.
Parks and Recreation had quite a few of the same sort of things. Feasibility study for increasing park pumping. Relevant different items. Um, if they require they have a poor property, it means it's a home purpose facility.
And that comes off completely because the school system is going to maintain that property and utilize it as a community center.
Those other three items on the previous page, is there any change that I can or any additions?
Anybody? Joe, you and Hannah both have served on the parks board. Anything you want to add?
That's personal, which is that's it's not sage.
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment. Okay. Okay. It's called home, and they call it home mills?
Yeah.
Home, yeah. That's what's on our eddest stuff, no? I don't know why the word transportation is there on that board. I didn't mean. Transportation generation center. Maybe transportation needs to come out that word?
Well, transportation, that's Kentucky River, which is the one that provides the bus for the service.
Correct. And it's generations with the N S on it, generations center.
Last bullet point was already stated. Some of the others, suspicion like maybe
I thought that way about.
No, yeah, I accept that one now.
Yeah.
So I was just, I just made a note that maybe the last bullet point
Combine.
The generation center does not have an S on it.
It does not?
No.
The generation center?
Junior Generation Center.
Generation Center. Okay, we'll take the S off.
You know what that is? It's good old fashioned Kentucky.
Generation Center.
Yep, exactly right.
And Diana, maybe you could send Sarah or John what the actual name is for the mills on wheels. Based on the bluegrass ad, how they
Yeah.
show that each month. Okay.
Any other items under housing? Safe city, I think the only thing we added here were the summer bike patrols, where the four by seven is secured by the city. For increased staffing, patrol, then also the ease of planning zoning for personnel services for the best commitment personnel resources.
I'm actually glad Chief walked in for this. Just because my only thought on the bike patrol was I don't know if that's a city objective, or if that should be a police department objective. Maybe something phrased to the effect of review patrol opportunities and grow proximity or grow mediums for how the patrol is done. Got six bullet point three. Because I marked that in the breakdown by the chart graph, whatever, just I feel like, you know, supporting the police is our job, but I think it's the police department's job to increase their bike patrol and review their patrol and think about what opportunities they want to grow on.
I think you're right, Commissioner. I think that it's definitely a police department objective, and I think it sounds good for the city to say support the police department. And we're also correct, and we have everything we need to do it, except additional personnel.
Is it still four bikes?
Yes, ma'am. We actually have six, but two of them are good old fashioned.
I mean, you had a little bit.
So on that item, we like to kind of reduce that, just to say that for police department, your first expansion.
Well, I would even tread lightly on, I mean, we kind of said that increased police and fire staffing, you know, of course, our police department is incredibly important, but I want to make sure we're not just honing in on one department and what we're writing.
Do you like the way it says police and fire?
I think we need to increase all essential services staffing, because I'd imagine Public Works would fall under that as well. Something broader.
You need it. I like the word essential. Chief, do you see anything else on? Chief, you don't have a copy of this, do you?
There's one up here.
We're on number six, like the third page, safe city. Give Brian one.
Hey, again, I'm English major, right? So you can just beat this up and make it longer or shorter, any which way. I think all of the information here is exactly what we're trying to say. But I mean, you can say ensure planning and zoning is supported with personnel, equipment, and resources. Because, I mean, we do have a lot of exciting projects going on. If that wants to be noted, then that can be listed. But again, you know, we could just and it's probably not time for me to keep speaking, because it's just one of those things, you could just change words around.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Chief, if you'll look at that number six, safe city, and see if you. And John, the embrace new technologies such as what? Chief or Chief, or Brian? What kind of new technologies are we looking at? The flock cameras?
And one thing we just got your website up in mind.
Fix it.
Yeah, this is a good one.
What about even just saying become technologically advanced?
Are you all okay if we maybe put in parentheses, example, flock cameras, fix it Winchester? Just so when somebody looks at, they know what we're talking about. Do you think? Yes, no, check in?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on six? Chief, Chief or Brian? Good, Chief?
Oh, no, just to piggyback on what Chief Townsend was articulating there. The increase in police and fire staffing as well as, um, uh, personnel equipment and resources. I think a lot of these things are subcategories to operations of each department that he and I will manage and, and pre-plan and plan for good to city manager, commission. But in general, just an overall understanding from the mayor, the city manager, and the commission that increasing staffing, addressing infrastructure, all these are things that we ask for your support, and we hope that that's the intent.
You know, and up there, increased police, fire, and probably we could, unless you've already added it, public works, cause they do help keep our city safe with the crosswalks and, uh. You know, snow removals and all those kind of things. What do y'all think about adding police, fire, and public works?
Yes.
Good.
E M S.
And E M S, yes.
Just to keep it clean, Mayor, I, I like what Commissioner Full said. I think if the intent is understood by all, that essential service is what that encompasses.
That's correct.
I think that one word articulates well enough that public work certainly, fire, E M S, is if all those individual have a book.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we good?
For my own clarity, uh, where did we leave bullet point three?
The bike patrols?
Yes, if that's a global one, that's also our need for previous bullet point first.
Chief, cement of the.
I think just what we said, I, I mean, I, I think it's being a little bit redundant there, cause it says increased police and staffing and the bikes, and says looks to increase staffing for bike patrols. Kind of duplicating itself, so. I think that Mr. Tool is right, if you want that to be part of my strategic plan, that's easily done within my department, and you can remove that third bullet point completely.
It can be increase and support essential services, or you can add another.
Yeah, does it, that makes sense. We're gonna eliminate it for now. So Chief, you better have more bikes and more people out there. We're gonna be looking at that one. I don't know if under one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet, expanding personnel services? If we need to have a second bullet, many large and exciting projects ongoing or planned, I mean, we kinda know that's gonna happen. What do y'all think there?
That's the truth, if we wanna toot our horn in it, we can leave it there.
Yep. Okay, let's leave it.
And really the first bullet point under that, for planning, so, which is personnel, and the last is personnel to do.
I think the main concept there is doing more however we can for planning it then.
You know, at one point, we've also talked about it, maybe down here a minute, but strengthening code enforcement? Cause that's something we're gonna really focus on the next little bit, is increasing code enforcement, how we're going about it, and what it should.
Well, in a sense, so this isn't necessarily redundant of what comes on these pages, I mean, it somewhat is, but on the next page, it does say exactly that, so I guess.
So should it go in this part as well? You're all the experts, please. Everybody okay with that? Joe?
I'm good.
Last thing that I want to put up, education, we're pushing. Go ahead and add that online quality of life to this section. And I think a big part of our conversation within this area of previous meetings about supporting entrepreneurship. Uh, whether that's be partnering with the University of Kentucky and the Small Business Development Center, partner with other level business leaders for explorers, more different opportunities for, uh, city and centers.
And John, I'm thinking I had Xed that one out with University of Kentucky, because B C T C is gonna be, um, putting a new training center, workforce training center in at their new building. And I think we wanna partner with B C T C at that point.
I think I did edit that little subsection, want this to talk about B C T C.
Right.
So we're Xing out University of Kentucky?
You know, they've already put the nursing program in, store time R N, and those kinds of things, the campus here. And you are, what are we specifically talking about when we're saying entrepreneurial events? What does that make you all think when you read that? Does it have to do with our grants, with our D D I F? Does it have to do with?
You mean like having a hospital, I mean, I know they, they do these kind of things, but do more events, I mean, not over the hospitals, it's entrepreneurial, I don't really know.
John, do you have any, any lightness on that?
Uh, I believe that's the intention, I think. Parish, we have to be local business leaders about, uh, fresh internship programs, or you guys, B C T C, it's one of the, perhaps certification thing.
I mean, I'd say that somewhat touches the last bullet point with, uh, joint planning with county and schools, I mean, as much as the city should support those types of things, I think job fair should be on school's agenda to be creating.
Chamber does a little bit of that. Chambers have lunch and learn seminars, they're already doing. Just a question on that third bullet, not the black bullet, but the, the white bullet there. Storefront renovation funds, would we wanna take that out and say in, like, D D I, do we wanna mention D D I F?
So I don't wanna just keep talking.
That's just a work session, you say what you want to.
That was what I, support entrepreneurship in the city by providing incentives to start, for startup businesses, um, through D D I F, through whatever.
Kickstarter grants.
Right.
We have that right now.
Right, right, um.
But we could strengthen that fund.
Sure, yes.
Yeah.
And expand it to other opportunities.
Right, maybe it's not even explore, maybe it's expand opportunities, because we definitely.
Yeah. And what are we gonna do as a city on bullet two? Work with the private sector, explore and implement second chance employment programs, what are we gonna do as a city?
I think that goes back to, uh, opioid. Help support businesses, like, you know, I always think of D D I F, and that's a great example of how, um, people that recovery need a stable job to help continue. So I think partner with a private business while they employ second chance.
Another huge one is stable recovery too, in Lexington, under Taylor, May Farm, they make some wonderful.
I'd like to. I just don't, wouldn't want the focus to solely be second chance employment based upon opioid abatement, second choice employment for a variety of people, families. But there's definitely more than just opioid abatement, do you know what I mean?
Right, but the funds are there for the opioid effect there, there's not a lot of other funds.
Well, I guess that's why I wonder, like, if, if that bullet point, work with the private sector to explore implement second chance employment program, and if it's worth having its own line in some way, because it is an opioid.
What, what would, how would you react to that?
Well, I'm thinking about, so we're gonna move from empty point one, that we're putting out the opioid program. Section seven, we're supposed to, this is the same thing. Focusing solely on opioids, maybe I have a bullet point underneath that about exploring opportunities, expand programs for all.
You think of, I mean, that's gonna be so far reaching, but you think of parents, and then you think of. Parents who have been home for the last twenty years raising their kids and have no idea how to enter into the workforce again, I mean, it can be a pretty wide spectrum. I don't know if that would fall in that type of classification, but.
You didn't ask, and then we'll go back, yeah.
Do you all think it'd be better to have that as two separate items, or as one form of each other? Does one take more precedent over the other?
Chris, what are you thinking on that? You're gonna have to manage this.
Well, I think, um. Hope you would affect us, I think, and be, start that up quickly, but I can see reasons why you couldn't follow that success up, if that's successful with the other. So if I were to prioritize it, I would prioritize people to code first, just because the funds are there, if we need to implement, we can do it. Um, that just would be my problem. Not say the other part, but I think that's something to tick off the ground.
You get away, low hanging fruit.
Have this first bullet point, the big program.
I like that. Sure, you don't know what's that?
No.
That last bullet thing?
Says successfully restarted the joint E M S. That's ongoing, that's been successful, it could last for about three years, so I don't know if you wanna continue, put that there, or who didn't accept that. It's completed, well, I mean, we did restart it, but it's ongoing too. That falls under the subsection.
Commission? Do you wanna do, guys? Repeat the question?
Sorry.
So the subsection about successfully restarting, uh, the joint E M S committee and joint school. Is that more of an ongoing item, or more of a stated item?
Continue joint E M S group mini and joint school planning?
It's already ongoing, Eddie. So.
So continue? I don't.
It's already on, ongoing.
What's the joint school planning? I do not know. I feel like we delete it.
Yeah, that's just not even heard from that person. Delete the joint school.
And maybe we oughta say there, what do you all think, if we get too detailed, but continue joint city-county E M S, so we know that we're partnering there? About okay there or not?
Move there.
Yeah.
No other, no other items? Uh, look at that, the direct budget impacts, I believe you had. Should that be added or changed, that list of overarching items significantly, we may have added a partnership, it was not.
I had Xed out bullet one and bullet four.
Yes.
You did?
Yeah. Doesn't really impact the budget.
Cause it's not gonna, right. Yeah.
As much as I wish the family entertainment center would impact our budget, I don't know that that would either.
If, you know, if it's okay, everybody, I'd like to leave that one there for this round, just in case we have somebody come to us privately and say, any help was kickstarted, or we have to do what's legal.
Sure.
Looking at the budget timelines tables, there are not many additions, the different items are.
Are we propping out the family entertainment?
We're gonna keep it for now. Keep it for now. One and four. Thank you.
The timeline of these tables was, uh, do good, and I'm sure it is, and that was probably the intent. Probably just add a note to each bullet. Outside that and not have each table. Just something I thought, read through.
So I was sitting last night and kind of adding up how many of these we have. Uh, it's clearly a broad view is good, but also honing in to actually knock some of these out's important. And so in the critical initiatives and priorities, the last three, competitive salaries, responders' needs, and prepare for the future, I think similar to what we were saying earlier. Could be summarized in one line of an annual review of essential service department's needs, whether it's compensation, whether it's the building, whatever it might be, like that could all be. Lumped. And again, essential services, so we're not leaving out.
That brings, but the works back into their future building and. Anything else? Anything else?
Consideration about brief suggestion for doing one of the tables, just for like
I'm fine with that, but I would like annual review for the essential services, one that we're lumping three into one.
And we don't want budget year begin twenty-three, that's a little old. What do y'all think about budget year on that one? Police and fire, that says staffing, yeah, we're talking about first responder campus. An actual physical combined police and fire on the same campus. Still keeping our other satellite stations, but. You all are keeping twenty-three or you want to update it to?
Which item are you looking at?
The very, oh, sorry. Important, increase police and fire staffing.
I didn't get that far yet, sorry. There is, what I thought on that one was the last item, explore possibilities for new fire police, I thought that's what you were talking about, was that these ability emerged. That's on.
Under critical and important?
Yes. Uh, yeah. Fourth item under critical, again, I think we need to take out downtown and make it Winchester. And then unpopular one. I'm not sure how I feel about it being critical and important for the city to develop and continue programming to enable independent living. Where do our committees and where does our infrastructure fall in line for that? Where does the housing authority fall in line? Where, where do other entities step up to that? I'm not saying it's not important.
Too good question.
Uh, but I certainly, when I look at the rest of the list and I think about how we're providing essential services as our top priority, I would not put that before some other items. So I don't know what I would do with it, but it kind of stood out to me. You did? I mean, again, important, we all agree on that, but where, where is the city line and where is a commitment to other government entities stepping up?
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that it's just for senior citizens either.
Sure, yeah.
I didn't want to take the word senior out because it's.
I mean, we could say something to the, like, less words, develop and continue to enable living opportunities for people to have homes. I mean, I don't know how Shannon would phrase it, he's huge on independent homeownership. And maybe it's some type of consideration like that.
Or so, it would redevelop and continue programming to enable independent living for citizens.
For all.
To live in their home.
I almost feel as if you could take the first two items and they're already said under critical when we're talking about reviewing of essential services needs. Brian can speak up to that because it's public work specific. But it seems redundant.
You saying the women item or?
Um, well, I mean, I just feel like it's already listed under critical, kind of. Similar to the second to last item with increased police and fire staffing.
Agreed.
Critical, important, but is it all?
Page.
Mayor would kick me, but I think that should be a wish.
I agree.
I mean, I would love it, but.
But I agree.
Yeah. Yes, it is. I mean, kind of, again, important ability to embrace new technologies. I don't know where we said something about technology, but kind of address.
We don't know where the new state office building is gonna go yet either, so that may impact the decision on the garage. This one says Brighton Trail and another place we've called it Walnut Grove, so we need to be consistent in that, whichever the proper terminology there. Which is it? Do we know? Is it Brighton?
It's the Brighton Trail off of Walnut Grove. Walnut Grove is the name of the road.
Anything else? If I wants to add to the wish list? I wish somebody would leave us a lot of money and we could do a lot of stuff. Anything else? Good?
Okay.
All right, and the plan is to bring this back in December? Is that what?
We can do that or we're gonna take this edit down to a second round. I asked the city to help us getting his new updated pictures. Particularly of the incredibly ongoing projects that you all have. See the progress that you all have.
She's got it, Wendy's making it up.
She's got it. Thank you all.
Very much.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
This helps, Jesus leader. We've all, all of us have always said, if we don't know where we are, we don't have a little journey, so. Thank you, thank you, Sarah, thank you, Matt. Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the four thirty meeting?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Shennott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stroh, any discussion on favor, I? And you will adjourn for three minutes.